Are we on? Are we on, ready to go? Are we on for Zoom that I can start?
Yeah, we're on.
Okay. Welcome all. This is the 6:30 Plan Commission Meeting, Delaware City, April 12, 2021.
Does it ring the microphone?
Part of this will be a hearing. Now, we will conduct the planning commissions. Normal business first. Following that, the city will present a program on the two ordinances. After that, Max from Fort Dupont, Max One, will present its views. And after that, we will have public comment, which will be limited to three minutes per person. Council members that are here are not here to comment on anything or answer questions tonight. And Valerie Longhurst will be following this meeting on Zoom remotely. As well as now?
That's exactly.
Hold for her.
Yes.
Okay. First order of business. I check in. Dan?
Dana Romo.
Tim Billway.
Tom Wilson.
Tom Smith.
First order of business, resume the minutes from last one. Take a couple minutes to do so. Anybody have any comments on the minutes? I get a motion approved. A session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed. Motion passed. Council, the floor is yours. Good evening, members of the commission.
My name is Bill.
I can't hear you.
Bring it up close. That's what everybody tells me. How's that? That's wonderful.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Bill for Don.
Okay, let's try it again.
I think I can get this part right. My name is Bill for Don. And I'm the city solicitor for Delaware City. My role here this evening is to present to you.
Here. If I have to do my drill sergeant, I mean, I will. Okay, this is going to take a while, I think. But my name is Bill for Don. I am the city solicitor for Delaware City. And my role here tonight is to review with you two ordinances that were introduced before city council. The purpose of this meeting is to have a public hearing and for you, the commission, to hear public comment from anyone who's interested in providing a comment on these two proposed ordinances. Tonight is not a debate session. There are definitely people on both sides of these issues in terms of how they feel about the ordinances. The idea tonight is to gather information and council will consider anything that is provided from the public or interested parties. And certainly you would make your recommendation based on this hearing that's taking place tonight as well. But tonight is really informational. We're not going to be debating issues. I'm sure you've been aware that Fort Dupont has submitted a legal letter. I will not be addressing any legal issues that they've raised. Suffice to say that in reviewing the legal issues, I'm not concerned about those that they raised to any extent. In terms of why we're here and why did these ordinances come about? And actually, they came about at a time when I started as the acting city solicitor involving the Blue Water Project. The Blue Water Project was approved by city council. In fact, it was approved by the planning commission. Maybe, I think it came twice before the planning commission was approved. But it was approved. And there were a number of members of the public that were very concerned about that approval, how that came about, and what role the city council had in determining whether they could vote yes or no. As the city solicitor, I advised them that under the code, as it stood at that time, the city council had to vote yes. They had to approve the plan that met the Delaware City Code requirements. So I advised them that despite potential opposition from some members of the city council, that they had to vote yes, which they did, in accordance with their obligations to enforce the Delaware City Code. But nevertheless, the approval of that plan caused a lot of consternation within community members of Delaware City, which caused the city council to ask my office to draft these two ordinances. These are draft ordinances. This is basically the time to really get into some debate and discussion regarding these issues. In regard to the Blue Water Project, the primary concern there was about the wetlands and floodplain. And one of the ordinances we are going to be talking about tonight includes adding a buffer in the Delaware City Code. Now, in terms of Blue Water, a Blue Water's position as the Kansas City Council was that the planning commission had approved it. How could anyone have a problem with it? The community was aware of it and apparently had full support very early on. And that, from the record, from what I can tell, is correct. But the problem that is going on with the Delaware City Code is that there's a disconnect currently between the conceptual plans that the commission reviewed and the ultimate plan that appeared before city council. And what I mean by that is, I came on about the time this was not ready to be voted on shortly before that. And one of my first tasks was to try and determine if this plan met the code requirements. And I was coming on very late in the process. But one of my biggest efforts was trying to figure out from the Blue Water development team, where were the wetlands on this project? Where was the floodplain on this project? Because up until that point, that very specific and technical information had not been provided in sufficient detail for me to determine if they met the requirements or not. Now, after several emails with council, and I know the city engineer working on behalf of the city made inquiries, there was a meeting a couple of weeks before the vote with Blue Water, with Fort Dupont, where for the first time, there was a detailed up plan that was actually written in a way that people could understand, that showed where the floodplain, where the wetlands were, whether tidal or non-tidal. But that very specific technical information that was not available to the planning commission when it ordered an approval was something that was not really provided in sufficient detail until shortly before the plan was approved. So I was at that meeting with Blue Water officials, with Fort Dupont, and with city officials. And at that time, it became pretty clear that some of these RV lots were fairly close to wetland areas. So during that meeting, I suggested that, why don't you eliminate ten lots here and shift that road over? And that would really make this a better plan in terms of an environment, environmental perspective. And at that time, the developer of Blue Water said, no. Fort Dupont did not come up and say, wait a second, you have 429 lots. You can't remove ten lots to make this a more amenable lot, something that might be better for the environment? And the answer is flat out, no. So obviously, the county, the city council meeting occurred after that. And they had to vote yes because it met the code. Even though the wetlands could have been better protected under a variety of other codes and a variety of other jurisdictions within the state of Delaware. So essentially, after the meeting and after the yes goes to Blue Water and citizens' comments to council members, it became apparent that something had to happen. That city council had to have some opportunity to have more say in the process where the code needed to be supplemented, one or the other. And a couple of points that need to be made before I go into the ordinances. Fort Dupont, as it exists today, is because the city annexed it. Fort Dupont could not do what they're doing in Newcastle County jurisdiction. Fort Dupont has a code, I'm sorry, Delaware City has a code about this thick when it comes to development and all the rules and regulations that follow. Newcastle County's code is about this thing. I mean, Newcastle County is a major jurisdiction that has the resources to implement a code that is much more far-reaching than what Delaware City has. Because Delaware City is a very small jurisdiction without the resources to develop a comprehensive code. So Fort Dupont was annexed into Delaware City. It was given HBR zoning district. HBR zoning district is a zoning district for Fort Dupont. That's basically all of that includes. The HBR zoning district, of which Fort Dupont is a beneficiary, is the most inclusive zoning district that I'm aware of in the state of Delaware. What I mean by that is that you can do residential, you can do, you can do residential by right currently, all sorts of residential, commercial, office, industrial, all within the same zoning category. I mean, this is the most permissive zoning category as far as I'm aware of. It's hard to beat it. It's hard to say that you can do more uses in any other zoning category in the state of Delaware. So you have a situation where it's a very permissive zoning to begin with, because you can do so many uses. Second to that, currently, all approvals are by right. By right is a developer's dream. What that means is you meet the code, it has to be approved, just like Blue Water. So I had to advise the city to have to vote yes, they met the code. Well, the code is this versus this, there's less regulations that apply, and that council had to vote yes. So in a situation where we have the most inclusive zoning district in the state, we have a by right approval for anything they want to do, which essentially takes Delaware City Council out of the discussion almost completely when it comes to what the ultimate plan looks like. And then thirdly, as I mentioned before, the Delaware City Code is, I'm not saying it's lacking, but certainly lacks various detailed protections that you would find in Newcastle County code. So as far as Fort Dupont, I mean, this is the perfect situation for them. They can do almost anything in a zoning district that seemingly they want to do. They have a by right approval system of anything they want to do. And they have the least foreboding code of anywhere in Delaware. So Fort Dupont is sitting in a very nice position at this point. But as a result of Blue Water and what transpired there, people asked questions. Citizens asked questions. They wanted to know, what can we do? What's better, what's more fair to Delaware City in this situation? And in regard to that, we've drafted some ordinances that have changed significantly as they've been drafted and passed around and discussed with members of council, with representatives from Fort Dupont. So I wanted to give that introduction because the concepts that we're bringing forward here are not, in my opinion, draconian in any sense. In fact, they're very, they still allow for all the types of development that currently would be permitted in the code. It just has an extra step to get a special use for it. I do want to note for the record that I was a Newcastle County attorney for five years, from 1997 to probably 2001, almost five years. Then in private practice since 2001, where I'm primarily a development attorney. So 95% of the time, I'm here for the developer saying, let my client build this or build that or get this approved. I've involved in many major projects in Delaware as we stand right now. So I'm not coming at this from the point of view of someone who's somehow trying to slow down Fort Dupont. But what I think we're trying to do with these ordinances is to allow for responsible development that is consistent with the master plan that the Ford talks about all the time, but to give Delaware City the right to approve it. Because at the end of the day, Delaware City is supposed to be approving these plans. It's not supposed to be Fort Dupont ushers in a plan, agrees to someone to sign the contract, and then gets to Delaware City and say, here it is, thank you very much, approve it without any questions. And that's what went down essentially with Blue Waters. So what I'd like to do is go through and explain these ordinances. Now, there's a lot of words on some of these pages. There are a lot of people here. I think people probably see the ordinances that have been posted online. So I'm not going to read it word for word. But what I want to try and do is make sure everyone in the room has an understanding of why these ordinances were drafted the way they were and what the intent of the ordinances is. Now, I'm going to go somewhat backwards because the first ordinance is ordinance number 21-031502. And this is a ordinance to amend chapter 46 and 54 of the Delaware City Code to add requirements for preparing buffers within HBR district. It also addresses street issues, zoning classification changes, major subdivision plan, and major site plan approval changes and tabling of matters. So there are a number of things in here, but I think as I go through this, hopefully, you'll understand the rationale behind this. Coming on board, looking at the code, there are issues that need to be corrected overall in the code as far as, somewhat hard and confusing to read the code sometimes because there's not really a search feature to it and the numbers and lettering can be confusing. But section one is simply a change, a typo. And section two, let's get right into the meat of it, is a repairing buffer ordinance, which is part of this. So again, I'm reading from ordinance 21-031502. The intent of the, let me just see here. I'm not sure if he's been handed out the, is there a copier on the site?
You got that.
Oh, yes.
You got yours? You're good. You're good.
But I'm not sure you can see the PowerPoint presentation that's still in. Maybe easier to look at that than reading alone. So in terms of the repairing buffer, which is part of this ordinance 21-031502. So the intent of this ordinance is to protect natural resources such as tidal and non-tidal wetlands, streams, rivers, and transition areas. Throughout the process of the approval of Blue Water, RV park, residents, and council members questioned the strength of Delaware City Code relative to the protection of natural resources, specifically wetland and floodplain areas. The portions of the proposed ordinance regarding delineation and mapping of these areas is basically a mirror image of the Newcastle County repairing buffer ordinance that applies in all unincorporated Newcastle County. So this ordinance regarding the buffer is nothing new. It's what's required of Newcastle County. There was one significant provision that was removed from the county ordinance, which prohibited development in the floodplain. Because we all know that the Ford is primarily in the floodplain. We've removed that so that it would not impact the development of the, in the floodplain. And actually, my next slide speaks to that exact issue. That issue, the floodplain was removed from the repairing buffer area because it would prohibit development on much of Fort Dupont. Now, the Delaware City Code does have floodplain regulations. But if you look at them closely, it's how you develop in the floodplain, not to protect the floodplain. But nevertheless, we recognize that Fort Dupont is primarily in the floodplain, and we're not trying to stop Fort Dupont from achieving its objectives. But, so we've removed that provision. Now, in terms of the Fort Dupont master plan, I'm sure you've seen the letter from the Ford. They talk about their master plan and adhering to the goals of the master plan. So essentially, one of the goals of the master plan is to protect wetlands. And quote from the master plan, "Wetlands have been mapped or to be protected from adverse impact in any future development scenario." That is a goal that was set by the master plan before Dupont. And that goal has not been achieved with the RV approval that was obtained. But that was a goal not met. From the master plan, it also states a significant landscape buffer along the Delaware River. Now, significant is not defined, but there are various depictions of various types of potential development within the Marina area, they call it, Marina Village. And Song show development up to the river, Song show development further back from the river. But these are the goals of the master plan. Significant landscape buffer in Delaware River. So something to be looked at and considered when Fort Dupont brings in a plan for the Marina Village. At the end of the day, it'll be about the Marina Village significantly because the Marina Village seems to be the main area that should be developed in the future. In light of the concerns raised by Fort Dupont, city engineer Ethan has prepared provisions to the proposed ordinance. I will pass out that ordinance tonight because we certainly don't want to cause any confusion for what could be placed in the repairing buffer. So essentially, we had our engineer review the proposed ordinance to see what changes could be made to clarify what could or couldn't go within a repairing buffer area. As far as I know, there is no Marina plan that's been presented to Delaware City. But the areas that we're talking about, in the revised language, permit a Marina, boardwalks, trails, and stormwater management facilities to be in a repairing buffer. And all those things are things that were never intended to be excluded. And the next slide is a slide that includes the language that was prepared by the city engineer related to the repairing buffer. And this, this is actually redlined on the ordinance. And it talks about allowing marinas presuming the approval of Denrick and Army Corps of Engineers. So certainly, they'll be regulated by Denrick and Army Corps of Engineers. But essentially, the concept of putting certain things in repairing buffer were never intended to be excluded. But from speaking with people at the Ford, they felt that it would be interpreted that way. But to clarify any concerns that they had or to resolve any concerns, the proposed language does permit certain things within a repairing buffer with the appropriate approvals from the appropriate regulating authorities. And that is essentially what we're talking about in terms of a repairing buffer. As I, just to conclude, the repairing buffer essentially matches the Newcastle County Code almost exactly, except we're not having the floodplain in this version of it. And this proposed ordinance is also a little bit more local in terms of if approvals are obtained from the, from Denrick or Army Corps, a Marina could be placed along the canal. The next section, I would like to turn your attention to, are section three and 12 of the proposed ordinance. And that is about tabling matters. Members of council were concerned that they did not want to be in a situation where things could be tabled by the government. And so we actually added provisions to allow the tabling by the planning commission or city council at one time. So essentially, if the matter comes before you and you're reviewing it, you're allowed to table at one time and have the applicant come back and see if they meet the requirements the second time they come back. After that, the applicant would have to ask to have the matter table or submit a new plan if they feel like they can't meet those requirements. This concept is in the Newcastle County Code. The idea being is that we don't want to be in a situation where city council or planning commission can continually table matters delaying approval that way. We want to have an efficient system and a system that developers have some comfort when they go through it, that they will not be tabled more than one time as long as they meet the requirements of the code. And I state on this slide, it tends to provide certainty in the approval process by limiting city council and the planning commission to one table and a matter of four consideration. The next section is section five, which talks about road requirements. This is in the general section of the code, of the Delaware City Code, that already subjects roads to DelDOT requirements. There's a provision that we struck from this particular paragraph because there was an exception for Fort Dupont, where it said that Fort, somehow Delaware City was exempting Fort Dupont from state law, which to me is inconsistent with state law. This change simply brings, this in accordance with state law and creates uniformity throughout Delaware City. Certainly, if Fort Dupont can gain an approval from DelDOT for roads, that is satisfactory to Delaware City. But ultimately, it's incumbent upon Fort Dupont to go to DelDOT and get an approval that meets with the DelDOT regulations. And we're now getting into, we need to get into more of a discussion with Fort Dupont about this because there are issues regarding the roads that need to be sorted out or determined one way or another. Will they be public roads or private roads? Will Delaware City have to maintain them and repair them? Will police service go to these roads or not? So there are a lot of issues that need to be dealt with regarding the roads in Fort Dupont. But this particular section five simply relates to, simply relates to requesting by code that Fort Dupont meet DelDOT requirements with every any roads of proposal. And the next couple of sections I'm going to be going through talk about, section four and six through 10, regarding zoning classification changes, major subdivision plans, and major site plans. There's a very common theme through these three approval processes that's being put in place. And I'm going to go through what that theme is with you. But the idea is to codify what is the review standard to be used by the planning commission and city council. It's basically codifies that in terms of the zoning chain, but it implements some things for the major subdivision plan and major site plan process that essentially allows for review of these plans by city council and removing, removing the by right approval from the process. And so the reasoning behind this is to provide an opportunity for city council to consider and make recommendations regarding a project. It's a pretty basic request. Basically, Delaware City would like to come to the table, be part of the discussion at a point in time when something could actually be done versus plans coming to city council with the requirement that they be approved. versus plans coming to city council with the requirement that they be approved. And as just stated, the intent is to provide clarity as to what the city council and planning commission consider when reviewing zoning classification changes, major subdivision plans, and major site plans. And establishes that review standard. These standards are found, uh, on the rezoning end of Newcastle County, pretty much verbatim. And it's probably the standard that you review when you're reviewing a resource in Delaware City now, but this codifies that. So the first thing we have are the zoning classification changes. And the nuts and bolts of this talk about the planning commission and city council. And basically, it just requires both bodies to, uh, look at the consistency of the plan with a comprehensive development plan, consistency with the character of the neighborhood, consistency with zoning and use of nearby properties, and suitability of the property for the uses which have been proposed in effect on nearby properties. Type of standards that you can look at now, but essentially, it'll have to be documented before the planning commission and also city council will use the same exact standard in reviewing the matter after the, the planning commission has given, they've given an opportunity to review the matter. It's really straightforward, common language for a rezoning. Whether it's a little different is regarding major subdivision plans and site plans. I'll get into a moment, but in terms of major subdivision plans, now the first question is, what is a major subdivision plan? Disturbs land greater than 10,000 square feet, creates more than three lots or creates a street. That's a major plan. Essentially, I have the Marina Village highlighted here because that seems from what we're hearing to be the point of, of contest here, that somehow the Marina Village is going to be stopped by these ordinance that they passed because city council will have the opportunity to vote yes or no based on the, um, criteria that I'll get to in a moment regarding major plans. Presumably, they would have to submit a major plan. in the correspondence from the fort, they talk so much about the master plan and how the master plan would be affected by these ordinances. And somehow, the master plan dictated something that it simply does not dictate. And if the fort stands up here tonight and says, "We have to buy right the master plan," the question that should be asked is, what is the master plan? The draft master, and I want to note from the comprehensive plan update, when, when this plan was annexed in, the quote, "The draft master plan develops Sisatski is not intended to have the force of law." That's a quote right out of the ordinance that was passed. So a master plan is a master plan, but it doesn't have the force of law. Fort Dupont has a lot of discretion to change that, but as far as I can tell, there really is no master plan, that I can tell from looking at the record of what has been produced by the fort in the years that have since passed. The master plan says that the Marina should be pursued as the first big move. This is right out of their master plan. They, they want to use the whole Delaware City to. I don't believe any plan has been submitted for the Marina to date. But in the master plan process, um, the concept was it was to be the first big move, signals growing activity at the site, demonstrates that the governance entity is willing to make a major investment, investments as necessary. And that the Marina may provide a dedicated stream of revenue. So this is the master plan. This is what they said they were going to do. They want to hold you to this, but as far as we can tell, they've done none of those things in the years since this has passed. The master plan talks about hosting a Marina-related facility, such as the Harbor Master, boat maintenance center, commercial spaces for suppliers. The village will be further defined by a boat chief, hotel, and waterfront dining and cafe. As far as I'm aware to date, there's been no such real plan presented. Nothing past general vague concepts that have not come to fruition as of this time. More from the Fort Dupont master plan. Develop a Marina Village with lodging, restaurants, and outdoors to support the emerging ecotourism hub. Next, the vision for Fort Dupont includes a bridge crossing of the canal, connecting the fort to downtown Delaware City. Community dining and activity spaces will be located within Marina Village. I personally have seen none of this, none of this presented to the city. What we have heard from Fort Dupont is there's some plan for stacked townhouses that they are insisted, uh, must be approved. But as of this time, we have no idea where it sits in the Marina Village, how it works in concert with any sort of restaurant, any sort of Marina Village, lodging, hotel, or anything. We have no information whatsoever. And the problem's going to be, the way the code is right now, they can bring that plan forward, and if it met the code, the city would have to approve it. And the city would not have an opportunity to say, "Wait a second. The master plan you're holding us to talks about these, all these amazing things, none of which have been, uh, proposed in any real sense as of this time." These plans can be hard to see, but when I keep on hearing about this master plan, not complies with the master plan, I wonder, what are they talking about? This is Sisatski Associates' master plan. This actual plan was attached to the ordinance when all this was approved. So we have a master plan. If you look at the details of it, at the top up by the river, there's a, I think there's a sewerage facility plan up there. And you see some buildings that appear to be odd long buildings that run in long ways across the page. So that's Sisatski Associates' master plan. And they want to hold Delaware City to the master plan, but this next plan is one that I believe, um, the, Fort Dupont representatives has prepared this plan to show what the Marina Village would look like. And I guess you'll probably be hearing more about this tonight. So essentially, there's this, this plan, they're calling it the master plan wetlands exhibit. Except this master plan isn't the same master plan that Sisatski did. It's far from it. And then we have what's on the website. So what is Fort Dupont telling Delaware City about what's going to be in the Marina Village? The Marina Village is up in the far left. I should have made that clear, people are unaware of that. The far, upper far left is the Marina Village. And so this plan is some sort of site plan. It's on the website to show what, uh, I don't know if those are stacked townhouses or apartments. I don't know what they are. They're probably not stacked townhouses, but it's hard to say what they are. So essentially, stick with the comp plan, what were they talking about? Because this is the original master plan. This is some later in time plan, as well as this plan. And you have three completely different plans. So what Fort Dupont would like is just to bring in a plan that works from their perspective and throw it on the Marina parcel. And without the benefit of a, of review process by city council, city council will have to vote yes. And the intent of this ordinance is to allow city council to have a seat at the table so that when it comes in, city council has the opportunity to review the plan and make sure it meets all the parameters of the master plan that Fort Dupont would like to assure that Delaware City complies with. So the question is, how do you go about doing this in light of the past history in dealing with the Blue Water Project? This gets confusing. I'm not going to cite the numbers, but I'll get, tell you the concept. For a major subdivision plan, as I previously defined, essentially, there's going to have to be a process. The process will go to the planning commission, also go to city council, but it would require the same sort of review that occurred, um, for rezoning. Now, Fort Dupont's not going to need a rezoning because they already have HBR zone, which allows basically anything. There's a special use permit that they will be required to get out of this ordinance, but they're not going to commit for a rezoning. Presumably, they're going to come in with a major subdivision plan or a site plan, one or the other, to do a major project in the Marina. So essentially, this lays out the standard for review by the planning commission and by city council. And essentially, it talks about the same concepts we talked about for a, um, for the, uh, of rezoning. But note, it does say consistency with the comp plan. I mean, Fort Dupont is in the comp plan. Delaware City would look at the comp plan and look at the provisions regarding Fort Dupont and assure it's consistent with whatever can be made out to be part of that master plan. But it talks about the same things about consistency with the character of the neighborhood, consistency with zoning and use of nearby properties, suitability of the property for uses which have been proposed or restricted in effect on nearby properties. But what we've heard so far about the stacked townhouse plan, the problem with that is we don't know about parking. We don't know about access. We don't know about how, whatever relates to any other development there. And that's why it's important for Delaware City to have input in the process. So that's the major subdivision plan process. The major site plan is essentially the same. But it's, major site plan is defined as a new development or construction consisting of four or more dwelling units or which can't replace a building of greater than 15,000 square feet, and a subdivision is not required. So essentially, if you meet those criteria, it's a major site plan, and you certainly, you'd have to go through the same process I previously described for the major subdivision plan. If you're not a major subdivision plan or not a major site plan, you don't. Then you go back to the buy right situation. So again, I'm not going to read this chap, chapter and verse, but essentially, it's the same process and the same criteria would be reviewed by the planning commission and by the city council. So that is the first ordinance. I'm going to go straight through the first ordinance regarding the zoning district because I think it'd be helpful just to go through both of these, allow the fort to make any comments they want to make, and have a public comment on everything at the same time versus trying to do one at a time and not allowing enough time for each one. So this is actually, uh, the, regarding the zoning needs to our district, I talked about that briefly before. There was one thing I did want to touch on regarding the first ordinance. That was in my notes, but I slipped. In regard to that ordinance and apparent controversy regarding the Marina District, whether it's real or, uh, or not, Councilperson Concus, everyone is aware as a relationship to the existing Marina, she's going to refuse herself in consideration of that ordinance you just went through. She contacted me and suggested that before any, before I even raised any possibility of that. So Councilperson Concus will be refusing herself in consideration of the ordinance regarding the buffer. I don't believe it actually impacts the Marina, but, uh, we don't want any appearance of any sort of issue. So that was a good suggestion on her part, and that will be part of the record in regards to that ordinance. Now, moving on to the, on to the HBR zoning category. In regard to the HBRs, I explained before, if you look at the code, you'll see that the HBR zoning district is one of the most liberal and permissible zoning districts anywhere in Delaware. I can't imagine any more being permitted between residential, office, commercial, industrial, is a wide range of uses. So, in fact, it's so wide, it makes sense to take a look at what was there. And council, um, is concerned about projects that could be submitted without any review as currently permitted under the code and wanted to have a say and input regarding development projects here that require for a special use permit. So let's go through the HBR zone, which is essential, as I mentioned before, is the zoning district for the Fort Dupont area. Some of the code sections were, instead of saying what you're permitted to do there in the code, it said, "Anything that's permitted in a different zoning category is permitted to do here." And so it's a little bit confusing. So we wanted to be very clear, what you could do as a matter of rate in the HBR zoning district. Section one says, "Single-family residential where semi-detached dwellers, each on a separate lot." By rate, any projects, uh, in that regard would be by rate project. Townhomes in groups of three or four units, each on a separate lot, essentially is by rate as well. Uh, section two, it relates to multi-family units. And there were a variety of, um, there were a variety of sort of uses that were under the definition of multi-family residential uses that didn't seem to be residential to me, but they follow through that section of the code. So essentially, uh, we're leaving untouched 4618G, which is professional officer studios, which is permitted in the multi-family section of the current code, and also a social fraternal, social service union, and civ, uh, should be civic organizations as well. Now, in terms of, um, G, section G, professional offices or studio would require a special use permit, which I'll get to in a moment. Now, in terms of other multi-family residential uses permitted in the HBR district, nothing is prohibited. Nothing is prohibited in the HBR district. However, if you want to do a multi-family residential development there, it requires a special use permit. The idea is that special use permit would be required to give city council the idea, the ability to review the plan and make sure it works. In terms of why it would apply to multi-family units versus a single-family home is pretty evident, because of the single-family home, you have one house and a lot. And in terms of an apartment building or complex, you're going to have many units on a very small, defined space. So special use permits. Special use permit, uh, may be granted, but are not required to be granted throughout the sole discretion of city council under this ordinance. And then there's a series of factors to be considered when city council considers a special use permit. Which are some of the similar standards that you saw before, slightly more detailed, but essentially, it'll give city council the ability to review consistency with the comp, comprehensive development plan, consistency with the character of the neighborhood, in greater city of Delaware City, consisting with zoning and use of nearby properties, suitability of the property for uses which have been proposed or restricted, affect on nearby properties, including without limitation, divisional impact on adjacent lands, as first, impact on the area, and whether or not it's detrimental to health, safety, convenience, or public welfare of persons living within the city of Delaware City. So it basically gives city council the ability to look at these factors. Why it's important to have this ability is so that hopefully, a developer will decide to come see the city first and speak with the officials and try and come up with a suitable plan and advance the spinning of plan. I do most of the development work, and my first thought if a client calls me about development projects is, "Great, most of my work's in Newcastle County. That's a great idea. Let's go to the county." We'll go to the county and see what they say. Even if it's a buy right plan, I do that because you'll want to make sure that the county knows what's going on, they're on board. We have a disconnect in the situation that you're in now because Fort Dupont has taken a position that they are essentially the approval process. Because once they bring a plan forward under the current code, it has to be approved by right, it essentially makes Fort Dupont the approval agency, not Delaware City, even though Delaware City is the entity that has to give approval. So it's a little bit backwards here. And this, the intent here is to roll that around a little bit. It's not much to ask for a developer to come to Delaware City with plans. In regard to the stacked townhouse plan, uh, well, there is no plan. I mean, I know, I know what I've seen. I've seen some, uh, I've seen some depictions of stacked town, stacked townhouse units. I presume it's from some other developments. town, stacked townhouse units, I presume it's from some other development somewhere, and I've seen four plans of stacked townhomes. And I think that's great, but really what I wanted to see, and I don't know if it exists, but I asked for a copy of the site plan, well, where is it going to actually sit? How are the roads going to work around that? And where are these other things in the master plan going to fit in around that? This has been a question that has been out there for some time, and we have not, as far as I'm aware, I have not seen a site plan that shows how this lays out. I think it's a very reasonable question to ask, and it's not unreasonable to ask a developer who's going to invest millions and millions of dollars to submit a site plan of how this would lay out. It's very common in development for these major companies like this to invest a couple thousand bucks to do that, and perhaps even the Ford would pay for that in all the plans that are getting prepared. Obviously, they retain Duffield to prepare multiple plans, and that Duffield could do it for them if somehow the developer didn't want to do that. But I can tell you, my experience is that in my experience with legitimate developers of all sizes, they would bring, they would bring a plan in early to the, to the government that has to approve it, not show a picture of what the house looks like and a floor plan of how it lays out, and expect that to be satisfactory. In my experience, a developer does not satisfactory, and at Fort Dupont, whatever's happening over there regarding how plans get digested and forwarded over here, there's a, there's a problem with the system. And I don't think that there's any issue over the type of development if the city has the ability to be evolved and what that looks like. So we have special use permit standards. So I need to say one thing about special use standards and how it came about in the first place. So initial ordinance that came out in December, we had a meeting with Fort Dupont and the representatives, and they, at that point, the position was no multifamily. And Fort Dupont came back and said, how about a special use permit option? So the special use permit aspect of this ordinance is largely for Fort Dupont, with one major difference, which I'll get to in a moment, but essentially the concept of we can get a special use permit for multifamily. And so Fort Dupont prepared a draft ordinance, and we worked from that, we went different directions, and we came back to a special use permit that was based on the standards that they set for the most part, very close to that. Now, the major difference with the special use permit from what they submitted to us and what it looks like today is that Fort Dupont suggested that the special use permit be required for 10 or more units versus, or I think more than 10 units. In that way, anything under 10 units would not need a special use permit. And my concern was, well, what if they came in with 10 units here, 10 units all the way down the block, sort the piece to purpose of getting a review by City Council? So we removed the number from 10 to zero, only because it certainly wouldn't be right for us to, to develop a concept, to have a review, and then have Fort Dupont come in with 10 or less units and never need a special use permit, after Fort Dupont is the one that suggested a special use permit wasn't appropriate process. I don't see the special use permit process that was proposed by Fort Dupont as being detrimental to the Ford. I think it just brings the Ford to the table early so that Council can take a look at things. So essentially, as we go through the procedures for special use permit, the owner has to make a submission regarding the special use permit with the plans to the mayor of City Council. Then it would come to the Planning Commission, like we're here tonight, and the Planning Commission make a recommendation, and then the City Council will review it. It seemed like pretty straightforward, fair process. Section three is sort of cleaning up an issue regarding what is permitted in the HPR zoning district, and that is a condominium, what, what is a condominium, what does condominium mean? Because the code before says that essentially you can do condominiums in the HPR zoning district. A condominium is a form of ownership, a condominium is not a type of development. An apartment could be a condominium, but there's no, in my experience, there's no such thing as something that's called a condominium. There's think, there are structures, it could be townhomes, it could be a variety of things, it couldn't have the condominium form of ownership where people buy into a condo association. But essentially, the code basically said you can do condominiums in the HPR zoning district, which led some people to believe, well, even if apartments aren't permitted, could we do condominium apartments? Which didn't really make a lot of sense, but to avoid any confusion, this code simply says that if the use is permitted, they can be condominium form of ownership. So you can have a condominium, but in order to have a condominium form of ownership, you have to have it be an approved use in HPR, simple as that. So essentially, a condominium is permitted, a condominium ownership is permitted. And that's all we're doing with that. Okay. The next section is about HPR, we added some sections, because the code wasn't entirely clear what you could or couldn't do. And essentially, redevelopment of existing properties shall be limited to uses permitted in the HPR district, which as you know, is a very wide list of items. But a special use permit would be required if it's not otherwise permitted use to HPR. So essentially, the existing properties can be used for any permitted use within there if not a special use permit would be required. In section 43, there was an issue about residential units above commercial or office uses, and again, we put in a provision that says, get a special use permit, then you can have residential uses over a commercial office use. So essentially, there's no limitation on what is currently permitted under the code, but in fact, there is more, there's an ability, I think, to do even more than what the code permitted before, based on this provision. And one point I wanted to bring up regarding this issue of stacked townhouses that we heard about, that I worked on the first development project in Newcastle County that has stacked townhouses in Darlington Green, Southern Division on Doyleby Pike, and at that time, Newcastle County said, stacked townhouse is not a townhouse. You may call it stacked townhouse, it's a townhouse that's one below, one above, is a stacked townhouse concept. But Newcastle County said, you can't do that, you can't build one on top of the other and sell those units that way, and we had to change law to do that. The current law arguably doesn't even permit stacked townhouses, but certainly this law would permit them to come in for special use permit for that type of development. So we feel like this is actually more inclusive than not. The last amendment relates to the $500 fee for special use permit applications, and that is my completion of the summary of the ordinance that was proposed for consideration by you tonight. And certainly, there's a lot there, but happy to answer any questions that you may have at this point. I just ask that you use your microphone if we're going to ask any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Dana? Ed? Bob?
Just a minute. No questions.
If that, it is Matt Walden, sir.
Sorry. Good evening, can everyone hear me? No?
No.
Try something different. How about now, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Good. So I am honored to be back here this evening. I missed the folks from Delaware City, I missed the people here, and it's very nice to be back and to see everybody, and I appreciate the opportunity, although I'm here in a little bit of a different role, representing the Fort Dupont Redevelopment Reservation Corporation. I have some disagreements with my friend, Bill Redonda, who swore me into the federal bar, but we have some disagreements, and we'll try to handle those properly. First, okay, 7 Delaware Code, 73, or excuse me, 4731, section CNE, declare the public policy of the General Assembly.
I will.
Thank you. They declare the public policy of the General Assembly with regard to Fort Dupont. And it says redevelopment and info will be concentrated within several defined areas and will be complementary to the existing historic buildings and landscapes. And it goes on to say, Fort Dupont and Delaware City will grow together as one city with strong physical and visual connections and complementary land uses. It says, the first land and building uses will be supported at Fort Dupont to achieve a shared vision for a live, work, learn, play, and visit community. That's what the state law says. The ordinances that we're talking about, the Planning Commission is going to recommend tonight, don't support this vision and are directly and specifically targeted at Fort Dupont in an effort to stop multifamily development at Fort Dupont. And while Mr. Redonda is correct, there hasn't been a Marina plan, this will functionally create it, because ultimately, this ultimately killed the Marina project, because the townhouses that are going to go up, and there hasn't been a plan since the day he's right, there's going to be ultimately the funding mechanism for the Marina. We can't build the Marina until we have the funds to do it, and we need to have the townhouse as part of that. So ultimately, we can't get there until such time as we have the money to build a Marina, right? And the goal ultimately, and that will functionally stop the Marina, at least with the ordinances that were presented and the ones we were provided an opportunity to review, ultimately, they would kill the Marina. And I think Bill mentioned that, because he and Mr. Athie, hello, Mr. Athie, worked on some revisions to that ordinance, which by the way, were not provided to the Ford and haven't been given us to us today. And that's one of our issues, we want to work together, and that's not, we haven't been working together to build that live, work, learn, play, visit, community, right? So that's a double down, we believe, in the initial ordinance, it was just a double down on that to try to stop the Marina. And, and the ordinance, the repairing ordinance that has written, and I can say I have not seen the revisions, I think we also need to watch that it's going to impact the homeowners who bought houses along the canal, because that buffer would then apply to them. But very importantly, without the allowance of some multifamily housing by right, there's not going to be diverse land uses at Fort Dupont. It'll just be another run of the mill suburban housing development, right? Now, with regard to the intent of the ordinances, I would like to give just a little bit of history, and I don't think any of this will be disputed, this occurred over the last few months. In December, unbeknownst to the Ford Corporation, Delaware City introduced an ordinance to ban multifamily housing at the, at Fort Dupont in the HPR district. And the Ford representatives found out about it accidentally, and the notice was, and the ordinance was ultimately pulled because it was not properly noticed. And I don't believe that ordinance was sent to the Planning Commission, I don't know, I do not believe the Planning Commission reviewed it. So in an effort to address the concerns of council, we had a meeting with Delaware City Representatives and asked the council of what evil was going to be cured by the ordinance, what was the evil that we're trying to cure? And those involved addressed concerns, but at least from the Ford's perspective, they didn't want garden apartments or big box apartments. And I thought it was a very productive discussion, to be fair. And my office, as Bill mentioned, prepared an ordinance to try to address what the city representatives believed to be the problem, because that's what we want to do, we want the Ford and Delaware City to work together, to come to some sort of compromise, if you know the evil that we're trying to cure, we're going to try to get it there, so we want to benefit the city as a whole, right? The next thing the Ford Court does is that there was a new ordinance placed on the agenda for, excuse me, that was a productive discussion, I forgot to mention, that I had, I did, Mr. Redonda's correct, I did have a discussion about the best way to, to try to alleviate the concerns over the large big box apartments. And I did come up with, and my office came up with to assist, came up with a special use permit idea, naturally as a compromise, so we could try to get over the evil that we're trying to be cured, without notice to us, without notice to the court, or to the Ford Court, right? There was a new ordinance placed on the agenda, and I'd like to also say at that meeting, there was a discussion of the stacked townhouses. And, and at that meeting, we said certainly, with respect to the stacked townhouses, we said those plans are not ready, but we're happy to share them with you, to look at what we have right now, because they're not done yet, and they're not in a position to be submitted. So we did share those plans in an effort for transparency, and what do we get? We got an ordinance placed on the Delaware City website that banned stacked townhouses. Well, that's not the interim ordinance that's before you, but I have it, it was introduced to draft, and it was placed, and it was on the agenda for the March Council meeting. So so ultimately, that's the mechanism that the Ford intends to use to fund the Marina, right? And I'd like to also say that the ordinance that was on the website, it said that it seeks to ban multifamily housing in Fort Dupont. And the third iteration of it, which is what's before you this evening, right, that's the third iteration, right? And read the whereas clause, it says, city councils, it has city councils express desires, right, to eliminate multifamily residential housing in the whereas clause, and make every multifamily use a discretionary special use. Now, if the first ordinance said we're banning multifamily housing, and the whereas clauses say that they're banning multifamily housing, that to me is an expressed desire to ban or get rid of multifamily housing, because anyone really think, when you have those out there that would be an approval of multifamily housing, that would never happen? It's stated in three different ordinances that that's intended, and again, that's going to kill the Marina. So what do the ordinances before you do? And I'll, I'll go with a more succinct version of my friend's presentation, and I hope that I don't offend or otherwise contradict him, but we do have a couple of disagreements, right? So again, we should do the whereas clauses, what do they say? It's to eliminate multifamily residential dwelling within the HPR district. It strikes the allowance for one, two family dwellings per lot framed on a site, which is now permissible, right, which was previously allowed by 47, or 4617B, right? Now, to be fair, it does allow for semi-detached dwellings, right, on a separate lot, but everyone knew that the Ford Court, in order to save the historic duplexes, wanted to keep that in, and the only logical inference is that one family or one, two family dwellings for not, per lot is not allowed anymore, because one time it was, and now that's out. It eliminates multifamily housing, and if you read through it, except for professional offices, and it makes all other multifamily housing subject to a special use permit. The previous draft allowed row homes, and this one does not. All special use permits are at the sole discretion of council, meaning that council can deny them for any reason or no reason at all. And to be fair, council is not subjecting any other zoning classification in the entire city to this special use requirement or anything. It's specifically targeted to one owner and one project. The latest ordinance does not ban stacked townhouses, but the previous one did, so we don't know how that's going to work. Condominiums are also permitted in the HPR district, but they're only for uses that are permitted in the HPR district, only for uses that are permitted. So if a multifamily use is allowed, right, then I guess you could have it, but there's not, you don't have But there's not, you don't have a revive right, multifamily use. There is an absolute ban of residential uses above commercial uses. So even though that there were intentions, hopefully at some point in time, of having apartments over storefronts much like you had in Delaware City, that would be barred, right? And ultimately, it makes any multifamily residential development subject to the whim of council, much like a rezoning application, so. So let's talk about the repairing buffer ordinance. And again, I have not had the pleasure or the opportunity to review the new iteration. So I hope I don't speak out of turn. But the ordinance that's presented, the one that we had, says, "It states council's desire to add requirements for riparian buffers within the historical preservation and redevelopment district." This isn't about preserving, preserving riparian buffers in the town. It's about preserving them apparently only at Fort DePond. It's targeted at one particular property. And it adds in setbacks from streams, entitled wetlands. And Bill was correct. The original ordinance did say wetlands and that was removed are assuming from the floodplain. And I want to make sure that's right. That was removed in the current version, ultimately. And so, and it also has the unintended problem of impacting properties along the canal in the HBR district. And I disagree with my friend's description of the tabling of matter one time. See, no reason why you couldn't table a matter one time. I read, I read ultimately that you could table a matter, and, but there's no provisions for reviving it. So if you read the tabling provision, it says that they can simply table it, giving them the right to table it. There's nothing that says when they have to bring it back up again. So if you table something indefinitely, and that applies to all properties in the city. The HBR, or the ordinance eliminates the exception for the streets in the HBR district. Let me tell you why that's in there. That's to protect the Ford's historic district designation and keep the character of the streets appropriately. Now, it also says for all subdivision in the city, there's a statement by adding factors which give discretion to the planning commission to deny an application even if it's zoned for its proposed use. And that's evidenced by the Sections 54, 28, and 54 order, which eliminates the language that code compliant plans and leads the council to determine whether or not it decides upon its appropriate plan. And we heard a lot about Newcastle County Code. Newcastle County Code has it the way that Delaware City's plans are now. If it meets the requirements, it has to be approved, it has to be approved, excuse me. So the intent, in my view, is pretty clear. It's to target the Fort DePond, it's to kill the Marina and the amenities. And we submit, it doesn't make any sense. The reasons stated in my letter, it doesn't make any planning sense. It's creating sprawl because why would you go through a discretionary process? Why wouldn't you just go through developing single family homes and townhouses, right? And that process is completely antithetical to a walkable community design. And it's antithetical to the master plan, which has birthed elements of multifamily housing which Delaware City needs. It makes no economic sense. The city will realize far less revenue from the redevelopment that was spurred by the state. Revenue that will be generated in the future. Remember what was there before. You had unadjudicated sex offenders, you had alcohol rehab places, you have all those. And although Bill and I disagreed, very friendly, but we do disagree, I believe this is reverse thoughts. You can't simply reverse everything you've done or money was spent in the lines of the plan. And I will say this, that no builder will ever build a substantial project if it can be denied on the whim or a reset of council. Delaware's articulated public policies, the Sterling Property Holdings Act versus Newcastle County, is for predictability and stability in land use. And I would like to say, if adopted, this will be the only jurisdiction in the entire state, of my knowledge, and Bill's a smart guy and he'll look at them all and tell me I'm wrong, but it's the only ones, my knowledge, where multifamily housing in a particular district will only be allowed by special use permit. So we submit that the ordinance don't make any sense. It don't make any economic sense. It will prevent folks from investing, it'll limit bringing in jobs, and we think it's illegal. And we submit, we don't think it's in the best interest of Delaware City. So, I would like to make a final point, or a couple of final points to the planning commission and you here. And I'd like to make an offer to the planning commission. If the city has a specific issue with the Fort DePond, alright? Let's talk about it. Let's have a discussion. Let's have what the impact is. Let's do what's beneficial to all concerned, like we tried to do when we met the city. Let's go back to growing Delaware City and Ford as one city as the legislation requires. Let's have communication and transparency and not have ordinances that are introduced that if upheld could be detrimental to the Ford Court and have unintended consequences, like the repairing ordinance, which is now being done. I will pledge to you, if the Ford Court wants to grow as one city, for whatever has happened in the past, or what's happened in the past, or from the disagreements, et cetera. I think it's beneficial to Delaware City, a city I love very much. At least Ford Court and Delaware City shouldn't be in a fight. We should be working together. We should not be giving ordinances later. If there's a problem, let's discuss it. And I would like to say the idea, Bill, that we didn't bring a plan in. There's concept plan review in the code, in the subdivision code, which has been for every single development that Ford has gone through, it's gone through that concept process. So it's not sort of lobbing things in there. And we don't want that to happen. We don't want that to happen to the people of Delaware City. We would like to have a communal relationship. We certainly would like to do whatever we can to protect riparian buffers and things like that. But there's a balance. There's a balance in development. There's a balance in funds that are spent. So, again, I'll speak for the Ford Court. I'll stand here. We don't want to be in a fight. We don't want to have to have presentations in front of the planning commission, not ordinances we haven't seen. So ultimately, we'd like to work together with Delaware City. We'd like to find a compromise. We'd like to find a way to make this work. Because the state is investing millions of dollars in this community through Fort DePond. And we'd like to make that work. We'd like to bring the amenities that's from. We'd like to bring the things that are in the master plan here. And we'd like to do it as a collaborative effort. And we'd like to find a way to make that work. So, I'm going to make the offer. I'll stand here and make the offer. We would like to have that collaborative discussion. And I think, we haven't had that thus far. And we've got ordinance after ordinance, which are shared with us ahead of time, which are reviewed by us ahead of time, and we're trying to do it ahead of date. So what we want to do is, we would like to address the concerns, the planning concerns of Delaware City without harming the redevelopment of Fort DePond. With that said, and I would like to say, and I'm sorry that I cannot hang around tonight. I have a sick child. My colleague will stay. He's going to take my having to leave early tonight as anything other than what it is. I'm very passionate about this city. I love this place. Passionate about Fort DePond. I think these ordinances are a bad idea. I think that you should recommend against these ordinances. And I will pledge, I will pledge that if we have an ability to work together, if we know what the issues are, and we can come to a solution that's beneficial to all concerned, that's what we want to do. So, Mr. Chair, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Again, my apologies. I cannot stay through the evening.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My one question is, you said earlier that you have not had an opportunity to review some of these things that reached your desk.
That's correct. That's correct. And Bill, and Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong. You did note on your PowerPoint, and I don't want to misstate it anyway, you put on your PowerPoint that you were making some revisions with respect to walkways and things for the riparian ordinance so that, you know, it would accommodate a Marina. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, actually, on the PowerPoint it did say that a Marina approved by Denrec and Army Corps would be permitted. That is a recent development in light of comments we've received. So it's a moving target.
I guess that's my point. It's absolutely a moving target, which we're not a part of. And we'd like to be a part of. And we'd like to be involved in it.
Yes. Any questions from you? Tom, Beth, Dan?
I thank you all. I thank you all for the opportunity to speak. Bill, if I'd have known you had a PowerPoint, maybe I'd have done a PowerPoint too. So I'm sorry about that, okay? Thank you all.
Good luck with your talk.
Thank you.
Since I lack a microphone. We're going to begin the public comments section of this. I would like to limit the comments to three minutes. You put up your hand. We'll call on you to come up. I'm a military, and when you come up, please state your name and your address to the mic and three minutes of comment. So who would like to go first? Dan, I think you had your hand up first.
Can you hear me? You hear me now? Okay, my name is Dan Saunders. I live at 207 Jefferson Street here in Delaware City. I am a member of council, but I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight. I have been a member of the planning commission. I'm speaking in support of the ordinances. I believe that they are necessary to help ensure what Max just said about getting cooperation between Fort DePond and the city. Please help ensure that so that we can, by codifying it, it basically requires. And so, obviously, there are some words missing that may need to occur, you know, that it's a process. But I think they are, they are good in that respect. You can look at them as saying they are targeting Fort DePond. However, if you look at Delaware City, that is really the only area where we can have major development. And so, you know, that's, that's just, that is what it is. So the intent is not to stop development. I've stated publicly multiple times, I support the redevelopment of Fort DePond. My questions and my comments have always been around what is going to be there? You know, what the density is going to be, how it's going to be located? You know, I am, you know, passionate about the wetlands. That was my big concern about the RV park. My only real concern was the wetlands. And I was disappointed that between the time it was first discussed in August, that they blew water, said yes, they could meet the wetland proposal that was there for the accounting. Then they came back and said, "Well, no, we really can't." And so that was a disappointment. I sort of now voted for it because it met all their other codes. But that was a disappointment for me. So to me, these ordinances are, you know, when you really get all the way down to it, you know, we can words miss them, we can worry about, you know, legalese and all that stuff. But it's to ensure that there is cooperation like there was when the original plan was developed. You had multiple people involved, you know, multiple disciplines. And so this, you know, kind of creates another atmosphere where that occurs. And that's, you know, not trying to stop anything, just trying to make sure that, you know, what's written in our comprehensive plan is that the Fort DePond redevelopment will be an asset to Delaware City. However, it must be done in a way that is consistent with Delaware City. And one of the things is consistent with the small town atmosphere, you know? And so that is somewhat subjective. Everybody has a different view of what the small town atmosphere is. But that's what, you know, one of the things that we talked about during the Wildland Management Mission and creating the updated comprehensive plan was to make sure that whatever occurs is consistent with maintaining this small town atmosphere.
Dan, you need to finish up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Toby Williams. Alan Williams is my real name. 403 Hamilton Street. Hi, Tim. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. I've also previously sat on this planning committee for three and a half years and we did a lot of work in this town. I also sat on that committee when Mr. Randall came and made proposals to develop Fort DePond. And at one time, I disagreed with him. I no longer disagree with him and I'll tell you why. All we have to do is look two towns away, and we see North and South St. Georgians. Wonderful community. They get along well. They handle it well, business and residential. I've been watching the development over there, multi-family dwellings. We approved it three and a half years ago. We can't disapprove of them. But I do see one discrepancy. Everyone's talking about a buffer zone. They're not giving this planning committee one single word to work on because they've never put numbers to it. Should it be 1,000 feet? Should it be 200 feet? Should it be 10 feet? Also, the area of the Marina that they're talking about, everybody's talking about is wetlands. It's 12 foot higher in topo than the rest of the, the rest of the project. How can you talk about wetlands when there's no wetlands? Anyhow, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Toby.
Hello. Meg Titus, 515 Clinton Street, former council member. At a previous meeting that Mr. Redonda referenced, Max Walton stood up here when I asked him about the buffer zone, why we did not have the buffer zone when we went from Newcastle, when he was doing the Fort DePond and the HBR zone. And I said, "Well, how did it get out?" Because we did have it before, previously. We followed Newcastle County. He said, "Well, when we discussed this, if I got 80% of it right, then I did good." Meaning that he missed, like it was conveniently left off of the HBR zoning over there. That was the answer to my question then. However, tonight, it seems like it's a different thing that he was talking about. So we did use to have the buffer zone. That's to cover that. Secondly, buffers are highly contested by all landowners and developers because of course it's about money. Money only goes so far when your town gets packed up so much with people. The parking over there is already a mess. They're already having problems with that. So I hope that you all consider the impact, you know, of the land. The RV park went through, as Mr. Redonda said, with a lot of problems. And I've been a groomer for 35 years. I only get bit by the same dog once. I don't get bit twice. So think about how that went through and what we were told and everything because this is now, you know, another issue that's going to go on. So, you know, I agree with council. There needs to be checks and balances. I don't feel like they'll check and balance yourself. Why should they have the smaller streets? Why should they not have any rules? In Delaware City, you have commercial zones, you have residential, you have the rules. The HBR covers all that. Why should the whole place just be under one thing? So I think this provides the city council a means of checks and balance with Fort DePond rather than they just get to do whatever it is they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Come ahead.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Troy Nash. I'm 405 Fifth Street, Delaware City, right down the road. Been a resident here over 25 years now. I don't have really nothing great to say. I'm just your common citizen around here. I was just reflecting, I really was just reflecting on the peaceful walks that I had over there, the wildlife over there and how, you know, when you wanted to get away, you can go into the backstreets. can go into the backstreets back there and take the little quiet walks without the houses and developments over there. You know, I heard the man say about the disabled that was over there, the mentally challenged or whatever, how he put it, you know. But I remember a lot of peaceful moments over in that atmosphere, over in that area. These wetlands and the wildlife we see all the time, I know that for sure. But I was just saying how personal it is even to the smallest person in this town. You know, it's been a lot more traffic here, a lot more things going on in this city and it's actually felt like someone moved in on your territory. Literally, you know, they had a crab feast over there and then all of a sudden it was housing developments there. I'm, I'm just saying from my point of view, you know, transparency is a must, you know. We, we, I guess we welcome the business and things like that, but you look at the developments like over here and right off of Newcastle, before you get to old Newcastle, how they got all those condominium buildings and all of that stuff built up. That's terrible. This is a country atmosphere. I mean, I like the country, you know, and I, I just pray that we, whatever you do over there, that it'll still be friendly to the environment, you know, friendly folks, you know, I mean, I don't know what I'm trying to say. It's just that it's, Delaware City ain't going to be like it was no more for the 25 years with all the new residents here, you know, and people know each other here. Everybody know here, everybody know each other here. I mean, I might know them not by name, but by face, we know each other, you know. So there's a lot of changes going on around here. And I, we're at the mercy of the council to look for our best interests, and that's who we trust in, you know. So I, I trust and just pray for all information to be given to even the common, the common person around here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's next? Come ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kareem Hall. My wife and I just purchased the lot at 907 Reynolds. We visited Delaware City late last year and we liked it here. We liked you people and we knew we wanted to be a part of what you had here, this wonderful town. More so, we wanted to be a part of it in the future and what Delaware City could be with more smiling faces. We wanted to be among those smiling faces. And we are glad to say that we are joining you. We bought this, we bought into this community on the promise of further development of the area. I think I'm not the only property owner here who is concerned about things like the volume at home and how the area is going to look going forward. I do appreciate the old town feeling here. It's what I wanted, it's what I wanted to be a part of. I'm here to ask you to consider, those of us who are joining you, when you make your decisions about how you vote today, we appreciate your time and just thank you for the opportunity you've earned here. I want to keep this short, but I hope you all have a blessed day and I pray wisdom over all the things that we're doing that our steps are ordered here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Who's next? Come ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see, I'm sorry. Go ahead, then we'll pick that lady next.
Hello, Delaware City. My name is Evan Flag. I live in 918 Reynolds Street in the Fort Dupont section. I want to say that this council had to be voted on by the people. And the councilman, the council members approved this Fort Dupont area. And when I tell you that the neighbors that are there are the most friendliest neighbors that I've ever lived around and reaching across that canal, I've been, I've had the sweet taste of the sisters cupcakes and cookies. I've had the sweet barbecue of the barbecue pit. I had the delectable appetizers from Bradley Dicks. We're not here to create our own community. We're here to be a part of this community. And we will be part of also who's on the council as we go forward. So remember that as a community, we voted for these council members that approved what we have now. So please understand that, like, we're here to work together and, and, and make a full community. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me and we love the whole community, all right?
Thank you very much.
Erica Lindsay, 905 A Fifth Street. First, I'd like to sincerely thank Delaware City Council for introducing the two new ordinances regarding the development of Fort Dupont. I believe the actions of the FDRPC, specifically the executive director Jeff Randall and solicitor Max Walton, have proven that they are untrustworthy and that they have no intention of partnering with the city of Delaware City or the community despite annexation into town and the legislation that calls for ongoing community involvement. They have chosen to ignore residents and the city as we repeatedly called for transparency and inclusion in the decisions that affect our town. These ordinances will restore our collective voice and power, unite both sides of the canal, and protect our environment and natural resources. I want to make it clear that these are not about whether you are pro or con any specific building initiative of Fort Dupont. They are about being included in the decision-making process. They implement checks and balances so anyone rallying against the ordinance is actually rallying against the inclusion and partnership we were promised. I don't know why anyone would want that, wouldn't want that partnership unless they have something significant to hide or to lose. So again, I commend council and thank them for all they have done to create these ordinances and I encourage our community to support them so we can get them passed into law. Now, if I may, I have a couple of questions for Solicitor Rotunda. Number one, until the city adopted its only, its own, I'm sorry, until the city adopted its own zoning code, provided by Newcastle County's code, when our then-city solicitor Max Walton wrote the ordinance for our own zoning code, he neglected to include the 100-foot buffers around wetlands that were required in Newcastle County code. I recall an engineer from Blue Water saying that development would not be possible if they had to adhere to the 100-foot buffers. So my question to you is, is it fair to say that if Fort Dupont had not been annexed into the city, that the Blue Water development plan to develop Grassdale into a 400-plus space RV campground resort would not have been possible? Is that a true statement? That if, if Grassdale came on, if we never annexed the property and it was still under Newcastle County code, would Blue Water be able to develop the RV park?
Most likely the answer is no.
Okay.
Now, there may be some way to get around with variances, but it would have been a much, much more difficult process if it was all, if it was possible at all.
Okay, thank you. And number two, in a letter dated April 8th from the FDRPC solicitor Max Walton to the Delaware City Planning Commission, Section 2 infers that passage of the ordinances would be illegal and unenforceable. However, I recall in the March 15th meeting that you said the Delaware City HPR residential ordinance was actually written by Max Walton. I believe this occurred when the FDRPC realized the city wanted to create such an ordinance, so he was kind enough to write it for us, but he included a stipulation that multifamily homes are defined as any with more than 10 units. You spoke about this earlier. As you explained to us in the meeting that day, Mr. Rotunda, the 10-unit stipulation would basically render the ordinance useless. So you removed that piece, but otherwise, the ordinance is, as Max wrote it.
Erica, you need to wind it up.
So, super nice of Max to try and help us out, but I'm guessing he believed the ordinance was enforceable when he wrote it. So my question to you is, are both of these ordinances legal and enforceable?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Come on, I asked you to be, yes, 20 hands go up, so, so far we're, what, five, six people? Good enough, I'll get you next.
I'm Susan Ron, 1313 Officers Row. I am a resident of Fort Dupont.
You'll speak up.
I will, thank you. The FDRPC requires more stringent oversight. I hear concerns that the master plan is not being followed, but I wonder which master plan we are referring to. On the FDRPC website, the master plan dated November 31st, 2021, a date that actually does not exist, does not accurately reflect what is happening now. Why isn't the most updated master plan online? When asked for a current master plan, we are told that it's in flux. When we purchased our house, we were told that the theater would be refurbished and a brewery was taking over another building. As of today, two single-family homes have been renovated or refurbished. One is Mr. Jeff Randall, the director of the FDRPC's rental house. Estimates that over $1 million was spent renovating his rental house. Exterior improvements to Mr. Randall's rental home include major landscaping projects and a $170,000 koi pond. Mr. Randall's rent is rumored to be less than $1,500 a month. The other building that has been renovated is another rental home that Mr. Randall's assistant Peggy now rents. Her rent is rumored to be approximately $1,000 a month for a large, completely renovated and single-family home. I've asked Mr. Randall to correct these statements if they are incorrect. He refused to answer my email. The FDRPC has been missing the boat on working together with the city, its residents, and homeowners in Fort Dupont. Now Delaware City is demanding respect. Within the past year, Mr. Randall was asked to attend a city council meeting and answer questions from residents. What was his response? And I hate to even have to say this, the response was, "Go after yourself." I'll say it again. The FDRPC requires more stringent oversight. These ordinances put in place a system that must be followed by the FDRPC. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Dale? No, as long as I keep putting your hands up on my table, you okay with that, Dale?
First, thank you, whoever all of us, for allowing me to be here. I think what I will.
Take off your mask.
I think my offer is from a historical perspective. I looked around the room and I seemed like, you know, 50 years ago, I don't, I don't remember a lot of these faces. I don't know that even, you know, if they were ever here. So I just want to talk about that land that we call Fort Dupont. I'd like to talk about this town that we call Delaware City. Three minutes. This town has always had pride. It's always been a family for you. I know we all left our doors open. Everybody knew everybody. Even during the time when there was lights on one side and colors on the other, we still had that hospitality. And that made Delaware City attractive to everybody in all the metropolitan cities all around the world that knew anything about us. There was a certain love to you. That area of land we call Fort Dupont has always served the interest of us. We had swimming pools, we used to go swimming. We used to go to do track and field in the whole town. It's unfortunate that I, today, I feel such arrogance. That's not good because for whatever reason that attracted you here, you were destroyed if you destroyed the humility that allowed for us to be here and have a town like this. Been away for quite a few years, but I was proud to come back to see that we had some people that was on the council that asked pretty typically about us, but they still had some courage and some nerve to uphold the tradition, custom and practice of Delaware City. Delaware City is as small and tight as we are in our heart, and our courage is over the mind. There's nothing wrong with developing, but don't destroy the very thing that make you, the reason for having development is the very culture, the very, the heart, what the purpose of having finery, then you lose your children. Because now you got them all out there in the, in the glen. It's unfortunate if anyone comes in because you got a few dollars, you got more money than the next person in Delaware City, and you're able to buy such a finery. And then you come here and lose your child to the madness of the world because you destroyed the custom here. Please don't do that. That's all I'm asking, thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Dale?
Dale's 902 Clinton Street. Just want to express a couple of things. When I was listening to Mr. Rotunda give his presentation, I really thought, we're really a town of simples. I don't really know what we're doing. I felt like his view of us is, what are we doing? After all, I mean, the planning commission did approve of the HPR zoning when that was introduced and apparently that's the worst zoning in the world, from what he had told us. You all had looked at the plans for Blue Water, approved it. You know, and it's, it's like, things, everyone says it's not transparent, but everyone's seen plans. I mean, our city manager sits on the board of the Fort Dupont Redevelopment Corporation. Our vice mayor, every council meeting says, on what he did, he went to the Fort Dupont meeting, but they're not giving the reports. Maybe that's the transparency, maybe it's the Fort Dupont, maybe it's the, maybe it's my fault, because I used to sit on the Fort Dupont board and I'm trying to be more transparent about things. But what I, what I think is happening is there was mistakes made and now these two ordinances are coming into play and it's like they're, you're trying to kill a mouse in a house by burning the house down. You know, I just think they're too restrictive. I mean, it's always been taught to be multifamily at Fort Dupont. For now, for me, a special use permit makes it very restrictive and investors won't take that opportunity to, to, to put money, invest, you know, telling me to win with the five council members or our city solicitor, who they tend to listen to as, as seen by the decision of Blue Water approval. It's just, I just think it's been too restrictive. I think it could be modified where, you know, it's not as restrictive on the whim of five people. And there's really no clarification of what they can or can't do to approve or disapprove. And as an investor, I would not want to put money into a project knowing that, what's the outcome? I don't know the outcome. I'm not going to spend a dime if I don't know if I have any chance of getting approved. And that's just, I think, it might be a step that we could do something different, but I think these two are just too restrictive on what can and can't be built. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Anyone else? Come ahead, please.
Hi there. My name is Leah Gresian. I'm at 2015 Draper. Leah Gresian at 2015 Draper, new here. A little nervous, I wasn't really planning to speak, but along with some of the other residents at Fort Dupont, I feel the same way. We're here because we love Delaware City, what we saw here. And contradictory to what someone else shared, you know, we don't come here to ruin anything or wreck or destroy anything. And, you know, I'm not sure how all of this got passed to begin with, but, you know, perhaps some people feel hoodwinked or maybe that they didn't get all of the information. Well, we're kind of feeling the same way because we moved here and bought property here with a plan and a dream in mind of what, what this would be. And so, you know, that, we, we hope to see some of that or all of it come to fruition. And again, I love being here, I love, I take my morning walks. It's gorgeous. We don't want to see any of that go away. We'd like to be a part of the community. So I will just second that. Some of my neighbors, it's been wonderful and lovely. I come from a place where not, people don't really talk to the neighbors and here, you know, it's like, hi, you can say hi to everyone. It's really nice. It's really nice. So I'm not going to say anything one way or the other as far as for or against. What I will say is that we are interested in protecting property value and we're also interested in building revenue for the rest of the community as well.
Ma'am, ma'am, can I ask you a question of the residents over there? Go on, go to my phone. How do you, as a resident, feel about the possibility of the stacked townhouses for the Marina Villages becoming part of your neighborhood?
I feel really good about that. And there are definitely ways that development can happen in responsible manners that also bring, you know, financial growth to areas without destroying the beauty of a small-town feel. And I know that that can happen in my father's development.
The other, the other two people who were residents of Fort Delaware. Could you stand up? Could I ask you the same question? Yes, you may. And then we'll continue with the, but since we had a resident, I wanted to ask that question. I hope you don't mind. How about you?
Good evening, my name is Bill Ron.
Same question to you, sir.
Yep. Can I identify?
Yes.
My name is Bill Ron in 1313 Officers Row. I guess my concern with stacked townhomes and the kind of development they're talking about in Marina District comes to a matter of crowd size. There's been no comprehensive plan submitted to account for parking or to account for bodies. What I see on this side of Delaware City is space. There's a lot of room in the street, there's a lot of room on the sidewalk, in the park that borders the river. I worry that we would lose that on our side should there be unmitigated development. So, and I fully understand that these ordinances are not designed to mitigate development, only from my understanding, create a system where it could be balanced. So I want to say right now, I am for few ordinances. I think democracy dies in the dark. I think transparency is important, and I think it's been missing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I get another resident? You start? Thank you.
My name is Timothy C. Taylor, 112015 Draper Street. That's my illustrious girlfriend. She speaks a lot better than I do usually, as you guys know. So, we did move here based upon what was presented to us from the Board of Public Development Corporation. Whether or not all that comes true before this or not, I don't know. I'm not one to tell the future. But what I do know is that we moved here based upon what had already been pre-approved, and this seems like an us versus them thing. Now you guys are second guessing what you've approved and people who have invested in the future and the future of this city. I was in his basement yesterday looking at the hard work he's done in his house by his own hands. We went in and scabbed the decks today, right? And we came across the canal, it's just one small city. But you guys are forcing this across the canal like it's Delaware City against Fort Dupont. And it wasn't presented that way when I was, you know, came here first to look at the city, to see what the city was about. It was a Delaware city. My address doesn't say Fort Dupont when I get mail. You know what my address says? Delaware city. So you created an us versus them, and most of this us versus them, what I hear is come from the city council people who say, well, all this stuff got passed. The one revision to this was passed in 2016. It's five years later. You've got something that you got, that you built, you people before you voted on, and now you're trying to make the people who moved here pay that bill for you. Yes, there needs to be some kind of checks and balances. I don't want to have a 100-story building built over there. But from what I've been seeing or what I've been presented to, it doesn't look like that. It seems almost like double jeopardy though, right? You guys approved something on the city council, and now you want to take it back or you want to have more approval for what you pre-approved. If this had been presented to me when I was first looking for a place to move to, and I could have moved to any place in the country, I wouldn't have moved to an organization that was Fort Dupont against Delaware City. I moved to Delaware City. I didn't move to Redevelopment Corporation that you guys want to put more rules in place there. That's not what this whole thing was about for people when we moved here. It wasn't us versus them. And that's what this has really come down to. It's become very contentious about the people over the canal want this, people over the canal want that. And that's not what it's about. This is the future to grow the entire city, to improve the tax base, to improve facilities for the rest of the people in Delaware City, to bring more money to the community. I mean, we spend our hard-earned money in Delaware City.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's patience with this, but I think this is information we need to know. Same question, sir.
Susan Ron, 1313 Officers Row. To answer your question about how I would feel about stacked townhouses or any kind of further development there, I would say it's important to keep things in check. My neighbor who just spoke said that he could have moved anywhere, and if he had known that this was going to be an ongoing thing, he might not have moved here. I feel that way too, but for a different reason. We were the first people to move into Fort Dupont. We had no idea that we were bound by 52 pages of deeds and covenants, which about six months after we moved in, found that we were bound by these. I asked the builder why we didn't receive these.
Sorry. I would have answered to my question if you would.
Yes.
Thank you.
About the stacked townhouses.
About the stacked townhouses.
It's important to keep things in check. I do not think Fort Dupont has always been transparent in their dealings, and I don't see any reason why that would change going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So yes, I am a resident there as far as stacked housing or any other development. That's what I came for. I came for to be a part of a development that was building restaurants and marinas and things like that. So yeah, that was, that was part of the investment that we spent almost a half a million dollars to be a part of. As far as the other marina was concerned, that was one of the first steps that we took was to come and talk to that marina about boats and things like that. So we were a part of that community also. So yes, I would be definitely a part of that.
Thank you very much. If there are no other people from the port, I would like to go back to citizens' comments. Anyone else?
Christopher Brown, 86 Washington Street.
Close the mic.
Christopher Brown, 86 Washington Street. Are you answering questions for the... I'm very per business, I have done business. I think it's important for the community to grow. But I've never known a development company to have carte blanche, to do whatever they want, to submit whatever they want, and just be rubber-stained. So for that reason alone, I would support your business. Thank you.
Thank you. Another? I don't want to miss anybody. Hold on, sorry, I couldn't see it for the machine.
Kyle Lounsbury, 6 Warfield Drive. You guys are beautiful. I just moved to Delaware City two months ago, and you are the most beautiful town and people, and I love it. Everybody's so friendly and like, I've never heard over here, I've not met, said. It is a, you don't have to lock your door kind of town, and I love that. I actually just ran over to Fort Dupont and was running through the community. And afterwards, I literally, someone stopped me, and I was talking to him, and I was like, this is the coolest area. I had no clue what was going on. And I was like, they should really just develop this into a park, community, area where people can come together and there are people and votes and so on, so forth. And I thought it was a beautiful idea when I did hear about it. How you want to do it? I think you guys are having that discussion. I'm so glad that there are checks and balances and you guys care enough about your citizens and the citizens care enough about the development. And I think there definitely needs to be trust. And it's hard to put trust in a legal document. And I hope that you guys sit down privately and have those conversations between the city and the private developer. And you guys come together for, it sounds like everybody wants to be a Delaware city and people care about each other and love each other and create something great. So appreciate the time.
Appreciate it. Come ahead. You're next, Ray, after Megan.
Next title is 515 Clinton. I just wanted to say to the residents at Fort Dupont, we love you guys. We're not, it's not us against you as Delaware Cityans against Fort Duponts. I feel bad that you feel like that. I don't want you to feel like that. We're trying to protect your interests as well as the people in the city's interest because we have been burned, we feel, by the Fort Dupont Corporation and what we've been promised from the original Sasaki Plan. And you've been sold a green area, blah, blah, blah. We just don't want to see it stacked so tight with people and townhouses or apartments that nobody has a good life like we have it here. We love our town, and we want you all to have the same feel. And that's why we're always smiling all, because we're not so stacked up with people up our butts.
Come on, Ray.
Ray Fruit here, 909 District. We need this ordinance just for checks and balances because Fort Dupont has not been truthful along the way. Mr. Randall there has been untrue since that place started over there. And I've been working over in that area for the last five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come ahead.
Hi, I'm Craig O'Donnell, I live in 111 Washington Street. And I just wanted to say two things. One is, we really have had no communication from the corporation at the mayor and council meetings since we've been aware that there was development over at Fort Dupont. It would be nice if, say, once every other month, either the chairman of the board or Mr. Randall or someone came over, took questions, and told the community what was up. That's number one. And number two, I was usually, for 11 years, I was the guy in the back of the room with the notebook, taking the notes because I was a local government reporter over in Kent County, Maryland. And normally, being a reporter, you don't get a lot of talk. But one thing I did witness was over 600 county commission meetings, planning and zoning meetings, appeals board meetings, small-town government meetings, thousands and thousands of meetings. And in Kent County, the process that they used for approving developments was essentially the same as this ordinance contains. The terminology was a little different, but things went to the planning commission. There was a recommendation. And if it was something like what they called especially, excuse me, a special exception, eventually the commissioners voted on it, and they could vote it up or not. Usually, the recommendation was that something was consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the commissioners accepted that. So the decision-making process there, like I said, very similar to what's proposed here. It worked very well. If you've been over to Kent County, Maryland, it's a nice place, it's rural, lots of open space. They've had that process for about 30 years. And as far as I know, the good guys didn't always win, but everybody got a voice in the process. Thanks.
Thank you. Come ahead. Hello, John.
Hello, everybody. John Buckhite, 30 Clinton Street. I'm a council member, I'm also the owner of Crappy Decks. What I've been hearing tonight is a lot of they and us. Reminder, we have a city manager. He goes to every single Fort Dupont meeting. He represents Delaware City, which is Fort Dupont also. So if you have any questions about transparency, our city manager is the one that's getting paid. He's the person to ask. There is no non-transparency, there is no backbone deal for Fort Dupont. You know, we have ordinances that were approved. When I came here 15 years ago, we were very small-business friendly. That's what brought me here. I came here as an investor. Fell in love with this town so much, I moved from Rehoboth Beach and made it my primary residence. It's a great town, I've got, met the best friends in the world here. Derek D. Bennett is mayor. Like I said, it's very business-friendly. Since then, we have ordinances written like crazy. We have a impact fee now, we have a... Oh, hotel tax now we have. If you look at our city budget, our legal fees are going through the ceiling. Because every time we write ordinances, our $300 an hour man over there gets richer and richer. What does that get the city? Absolutely nothing. We have a code book written like this with a bunch of ordinances in there that I can't even understand half of it. And you think about how much money we pay attorneys to have to write them, what would that do for our infrastructure? We could have the best streets and sidewalks and everything in town. It would be gorgeous. Look at our Delaware City right now. Look at Washington Street, we lost Baby Beach, where's the outbreak? I don't trust this council having this, being okay in this ordinance because on city council, I just recommended to have an exploratory committee or a connector for Delaware City and Fort Dupont. And they rejected that idea for an exploratory committee. So I'm a little nervous about them being the final say on investors wanting to come to town. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Ray, you want to re-try?
Ray Fruit here, 909 District. I wasn't going to go here, but since Mr. Buckhite, the greedy person, went there, he is a bully. He has attacked me a couple of times.
Hang on, Ray. I want to comment on our issues, not on...
What's that?
I'd like to comment on our issues, not on the personalities.
This is about the issue, just what he said.
Well, there shouldn't be any personal attacks against anyone.
So I get to be attacked by a council member that's been cutting the rest of our councils down and cut our city manager and cut our mayor and just let that go? And he don't get to, and you guys stop me from talking, is that it?
He didn't, he didn't attack you personally, Ray.
Is that, is that the way it's going to be?
I'll give you another minute.
And they get to do what they want.
Ray, I'll give you another minute. Thank you. Anyone else? Come ahead.
As an outsider, Middletown Delaware, Jay Birmingham. I come down two, three days a week with a camera, with a couple of kids, a little peace of mind, a little photography, a little wildlife. The checks and balances are going to benefit the new neighborhood on the other side of the canal. They're going to benefit the history and the longevity of what's been built long before many of you have arrived here. They're for everybody in this room. They're going to protect you in the future in some way. I think I would support these suggestions that have been put forth. They can be modified in the future when you start leading and filling these positions. But for now, they're trying to protect you from an organization that might want to run just their agenda, and that's filling the land and filling what they can with construction. just their agenda, and that's filling the land and filling what they can with construction. That's just an outsider point of view. Please respect that. But a great love and appreciation for what's existed here for a very, very long time and what many of you have just bought into. It's exciting to see what's going on down here. If you all work together, it's going to be an amazing 50 years if you can keep some checks and balances in the short term and the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll take one or two more, and I think that'll be it if you don't mind. Anyone else? No? Last call. Anyone? Very good. Okay. We're going to go back to discussion to our folks ourselves here. What do you think about what we heard tonight? Start with Tom.
Well, I've heard the pros and cons.
Take off your mask.
I've heard a lot of pros and cons back and forth. I guess a few things have come to mind for me is that when they first started Fort Dupont, if my memory serves me correctly, they had enough...
Hang on.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Hello, my name's Tom Smith, and I'm on the planning commission. And as I was about to say, if my memory serves me correctly, when Fort Dupont, the conception of it to be annexed into our area here was presented, I was under the impression that they had more than enough funding to start exactly the way the original plan was initiated. I find it a little perplexing right now that that fell through or whatever. It wasn't part of their business plan. I just know what was presented to the town in order to acquire the need and voting for it to become an annex. I guess in midstream, their funding dried up, and they had to change in any of their meetings or anything of that nature. But if that, in fact, is the case, they may have wanted to come a little differently instead of changing their timeline maybe or changing their approach. I'm not qualified, and I'm not into their systems. But I find it a little perplexing that they don't have the money, and now they've changed gears, and they're going into another direction in order to obtain it. And not being on the city council, only in planning, I know what we are presented in order to look at things. And in that avenue of thought, I think that if the ordinance don't pass for some reason, secondary will be get some more information out of Fort Dupont so it's not so us against them. Based on what I hear from different people here, old Delaware city wants it the way it is. New Delaware city, and I don't want to put it that way, but Fort Dupont, in addition to Delaware city, they like what they were sold. So, you know, I think it just balances down to a situation of finances. So, you know, I think they're scrambling in order to get the money that they need to accomplish what they originally said. And they may have problems, and I use the word "may", have a difficulty in achieving that because they've already presented it to their prospective buyers and to the residents that they have over there. So the checks and balances, I feel, need to be done. But I don't know if it's hardcore. There has to be a lot more communications. That's my opinion.
My name is Pat Wilkinson. I've been on the planning commission for a couple of years now. I think it's really sad, the "us and them" concept. I feel bad for people that have paid $400,000 for their homes, and they may not deliver their promise. It just, it isn't right. I don't know what the answer is, but I do think it would be a good idea if Jeff or someone could come to council meeting every other month and give a presentation similar to what the police chief does. No questions, but you would just be sharing information. And anyone is welcome to come to the council meetings. One thing that really bothers me with these ordinances is I see nothing that prevents council from disapproving these special-use permits simply because they don't like the idea. I do not see... I don't see any enthusiasm and a lot of positivity. And I also see council taking over part of the duties of the planning commission. And I don't care for that either.
Dana?
I think it's time we take gloves off on both sides of the canal. No more grenades need to be logged back and forth. The dog that bit you, Megan, wasn't the Fort Dupont people. The blue water bit you, maybe Megan's not even here. Fort Dupont invited her. She said, "I'm not going to get bit again." These ordinances, proposed ordinances, to me, are too subjective. I'm concerned about their evolution or birth or where exactly they came from. I smell a hint of backdoor politics, which isn't good for any form of government, whether it's local, regional, state, federal. This is just my opinion. It was really interesting to listen to each and every one of you tonight. This, the new proposed things, if you'd say effective January 1, 2005... 20... yeah, 2005. I think the timing on it is really tough. Down the road, we do need the checks and balances. But I have faith in what we have. I don't think there's a monster on the other side of the canal, and I have faith on the council and working to get the gloves off, I guess, is why. I'm anxious to see the gloves come off and sitting down and talking and communicating and making things even more transparent. There's definitely a lack of transparency between the council and the Fort Dupont group. That can easily be corrected. And I will not be able to recommend the...
Thank you.
For those of you who don't know me, my name's Tim Billplane. I have been the chair of the planning commission, I guess, for three or four years. Had a short stint away from it. I've basically been on the planning commission for 10 years. I was around when all of the meetings occurred concerning the future of Fort Dupont and what was planned. I've been on the fort board until I was removed. And I get to see life from their side of the fence. They get money from the state, yes. But to accomplish their entire budget, they have to sell land, sell tax credits, collect money from events, and some other things that they do to hit their budget. Their budget is a moving target. It's kind of like a rope dominus. One thing has to happen for the next thing to fall down. That unfortunately is the way their life is on planning finances at the fort. Ray, Jeff? From our point of view, we all, or most of us, sat in on the meetings as to the intent of the fort and where they intended to go, several of them. And we knew upfront, basically, what was planned. In 2016, we acquired the fort as part of the city. And by doing so, we bought into the vision of Fort Dupont. The master plan of Fort Dupont seems to be a moving target. And I think it's because financial. The pressures put upon us, them, and everybody else from COVID-19 and the rest of the financial things that occurred last year, year and a half, has changed the face of a lot of things. They've had to adapt too. Personally, I feel the ordinances are too restrictive. And like Pat says, it's too subjective, dependent upon the whim of five people. We've heard a lot of opinions tonight, pros and cons, from people who just want to live in a quiet town, to those who want to see the town become something bigger or better. We all want to see it become something better. I'd hate like hell to see this town turn into something like downtown Bridgeville or downtown... I can't think of one of the other ones. Old Harbison, the one where they have the state-county fair. A lot of those little towns, business moved out onto the main drag, and they died. And I don't want to see that happen to us. I don't think it can because we're basically hemmed in by property. We're a self-contained unit. Like I said, I think these ordinances are too restrictive, and we curb a lot of opinions. I don't think I can render a fair judgment tonight until I consider more of these opinions. My restrictions on tabling have not been removed by council yet. And you know what? In the 10 years I've been on planning commission, we've probably tabled for three times. Why we need tabling issue, I don't know. But I would like, at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting three weeks from now. So we have timed them all over, what we heard. And I'll make that motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Harry? We'll think on it for the next three weeks and see where we're going next meeting. In the meantime, the planning commission will grow by one or two members, so we'll have more people to think about it, more opinions to balance it. Okay? I... We've heard a lot. I don't feel qualified to give you an answer tonight. I don't want to be unfair. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Next meeting, we'll appoint co-chair. I want to wait to pick them up. You know, I think...